I'd like to call the Front Royal Town Council meeting to order this evening for Monday, March 9, 2020. This evening now, we have a special group here of seniors, a service unit of 14-4 of Warren County, and they're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So I'd like you all to come forward and we'll all stand to witness.
Okay, so, I'm going to join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Just down there on the side first. Just down there, three of our agenda this evening will be a formant of a temporary clerk. The matter of the question, please.
I move that Town Council appoint and recognize Tina Presley Clark, sorry, Tina Presley as clerk of the Front Royal Town Council pro tempore for the meeting of Front Royal Town Council on March 9, 2020, regular meeting. Sorry. All right, I move that Town Council appoint and recognize Tina Presley as clerk of Front Royal Town Council pro temp for the meeting of Front Royal Town Council on March 9, 2020, regular meeting, and for such additional and further meetings of times that are a continuation of the March 9, 2020 meetings at his or her services, such as clerk pro temp may be needed.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion care. Mr. President, do we have a roll call this?
Mayor T. Wall.
Here.
Vice Mayor Seale.
Here.
Councilman Cockrell.
Here.
Councilman Delesby.
Absent.
Councilman Holloway.
Here.
Councilman Meza.
Here.
Councilman Thompson.
Here.
Thank you. Next, I have denied approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting minutes of February 24, 2020, special meeting minutes of February 19, 2020, and work session minutes of February 19, 2020. Turn your motion. Your airbrush.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the regular council meeting minutes of February 24, 2020, and the special meeting, special meeting minutes of February 19, 2020, and work session minutes of February 19, 2020, as presented.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion care. Next, I have denied, uh, received a petition from a correspondent from the public. Mr. President, do we have these figures received?
Yes, sir, we have two. The first one is Bruce Rabichardt.
Bruce Rabichardt, 15 Main Street, Front Royal Museum. I hope everyone, first of all, praying for your investments. The market went down 2,000 points today. Whether we like it or not, Front Royal compared to other communities is still Mayberry, North Carolina. I'm very concerned about the demise of the community over the years. When I'm going back 45 years, or there about, 30, 35 maybe, the community was built on a blue collar work ethic, and frankly, it has never fully recovered from the closure of the Apptex fires. Since the town does not have many major, the town, major employers paying livable wages other than, only one I can think of that isn't the town, is the Schools for Valley Health. It was, it has become a transient veteran community racing up and down the road to larger employment centers in order to make ends meet. If you don't believe me, get up at 5:00 in the morning and go down 66. Without serious commerce in this community, there is no way that physically the town can pay for all the services and repairs that will be required over the next 30 years without raising taxes. I'm not fond of taxes, but you can't take on the debt that you're talking about taking on debt without having a plan with regard of, of making the money back without tapping into your reserves. So, your budget has $29 million of capital improvements, which includes a big ticket item of $12 million water line that for all intents and purposes Dominion Energy needs done. So, so that they can continue to provide energy needs for regions north of the DMV, Delaware, Maryland, Virginia region. Do you know that Dominion Energy in FY 2019 had sales revenues of $16.572 billion, which was a 23.99% increase over their FY 2018 revenue numbers, and they want little old Mayberry Front Royal to use their debt services to pay $500,000 annually over the next 30 years to pay for the water line? What's to guarantee that Dominion does not hold steadfast in negotiations that the increased water fees should be capped so that they, they are, they are proposing to pay over the next 30 years? Order fees today at present value have little to do with the future cost to maintaining those lines 30 years from now. Frankly, I think a conglomerate like Dominion who rates in $16.572 billion annually could afford to pay for the complete cost of the line. If you look at the $12 million and you divide it into the $16.572 billion, you'll find that it's about .0007 of a percent. The capital improvements concerning the $8 million to replace the cracking pipes for stormwater infiltrates, the water treatment plant, $4.8 million to pay secondary roads, and doing the $2.8 million upgrade of water lines are all viable improvements for the town, and I guess as well as the building at the environmental services. But in, in order to do this, your debt service has to be paid, and the only way that you can do this is ultimately paying, raising taxes. You can't kick the can down the road forever. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabbit. Next speaker.
Linda Allen.
Linda Allen, 15 Main Street, and debt service will go up from $53 million to $83 million. And I want to talk to you more about what he was talking about. That's not really, so good evening, Mayor T. Wall, members of Town Council and staff. There is a problem with the Main Street and Royal Avenue intersection that I discussed with a town engineer, but he, as you know, is no longer here. The problem is serious enough to expect, however, that it be fixed, and soon. At this intersection, cars racing down on Royal Avenue going north and south. On Royal Avenue, one may be turning left, and one may be turning right. At first, the two cars seem to be aiming at each other while entering the center by the intersection, and then angled to make their respective turns. The problem occurs when there are cars in each lane of Royal Avenue and Main Street. The persons on Main Street can turn right on red. If the car is turning from East Main onto North Royal, around the corner of the Avenue End, no vehicle collision can occur. The person on West Main Street also turns right on red, and for seconds it aims toward the car turning left going to West Main. There's not enough room for three cars unless they make their turns very tightly. And the size of the vehicles and how far out the Main to the West Main Street driver swings becomes the problem. So these are medium sized cars that I'm just waking up, speaking of it this time. There are times when you see eyes wide open as two vehicles turn, one from West Main and one from South Royal, because they come so close to each other, they're within inches as it is, some of the big pickup trucks, for example, and my medium sized SUV. It's interesting, eyes wide open. I have had to stop when turning left from South Royal going to West Main because the medium sized SUV swung out from West Main using right on red besides over bed. It would help if the tenant would stop allowing a right turn on red from West Main onto South Royal. It could avoid an accident, and that comeback city could hit the car on Royal Avenue, which was my car, except that I stopped. And you know that even at low speeds, serious damage can be done to a car. Worse, a hit would be approximately at the driver's door, and with the door as the only protection against injury, it's not likely that bodily injury would be avoided. So if you would please refer this to someone who can fix it, I would appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Paul Gabbard, 1221102. I would like to comment on the gentleman about the redundant water line. I can't believe that this council would want the people of Front Royal to pay for this for years to come. You're going to give redundancy to every business out there and every person who lives out there in residential, and we, the town taxpayers, are going to pay for it. We do not have redundant lines. If we have a break, valve gets shut off, we lose water. Why should we be paying for, for everybody out in the corridor to have a redundant line? It's absolutely ridiculous in my book. Then, if I can just do this real quick. The first thing I would like to say is, I sent a request in, FOIA request in, asking for emails that the town manager and each council member received saying they were doing a good job. Our interim manager said that he has received many. I got a response from the town attorney saying that this request would cost me $2,816.2 with a $2,000 deposit. I hope that you all have your ears open on that. So I sent another FOIA request in. I cut it down to just the emails that the interim town manager received, the good emails, saying he's doing a good job. I got a response from the town attorney saying that this would cost me $2,816.2 with a $2,000 deposit. Would you buy a car for $60,000, then take a bunch of features off of it and still pay $60,000 for it? I don't know. I would like an answer from any of you all after I sit down later on today if you think that this is right or wrong. This is wrong. In the request, in the, in the response I got, it was going to take six people to, to fulfill this request, the interim town manager, the town attorney, the assistant town attorney, the IT director, the finance director, and the clerk of council. It would take 10 hours to search digital records, 12 hours to research hard copies, two and a half hours to copy, eight hours of town attorney time to go over because of client privilege. What client? Then it says attorney work progress, personal records, records protected by government collection, dissemination practices act, and other goals, that the material which probably ought not to be released is not inadvertently released. Man, it took a lawyer to send me that note, that's for sure. Another email I sent out was to each council member. The email read, "The time is long overdue for council to put a stop to the interim town manager's assault on this town, or are you okay with what he is doing?" I received three responses. I would like to read one response that came from Councilman Meza. It reads, "I'm sorry you feel this way, Mr. Gabbard, but I respectfully disagree. I see the fruit of Mr. Tendrick's work, as do town employees and the majority of council. In fact, I couldn't be more pleased on the town's progress regarding rightsizing, budget reductions, infrastructure improvements, high and low planning, employee compensation studies, and process improvement initiatives that make the town easier for individuals to conduct their business. It is the momentum that I hope the next town manager will continue." That disturbed me very greatly, to say the least.
How much longer do you have?
Two minutes. Mr. T. Wall has been talking about stop kicking the can down the road for I don't know how many years, and this council does not listen to anything that he says. He's wanted, he's wanted to put money into infrastructure, but this council has not voted to do it. He's been stopped at every avenue. I would like to know also if Mr. Tendrick filled out a statement of economic interest when he became interim mayor. I would like to know if he filled another one out when he became county manager, which I assume he should have done. There is, on that economic statement, there is three businesses that he says he gets a certain amount of money from, three businesses. I would like to read you a list of LLCs that Mr. Tendrick is involved in. Tendrick Real Estate LLC, Tendrick Builder Investments LLC, Wealth Management Bank, Rex Group LLC, General Knight Solutions LLC, Victor Communications, Dollar House LLC, Child Care Property Developers LLC, Blessing God's Way LLC, Media Bridge LLC, 1839 Capital LLC, Stronghold of Virginia LLC, Dominion Financial Services LLC, GTS Direct LLC, Information Operations Intelligence LLC.
Mr. Gabbard, would you please?
I will, I will. But I would like to know if this council looked at all of this stuff before they put him in as interim mayor and interim town manager. I would like to know if you all looked at all of this to see what he put down was accurate and only what he put down was accurate, because there wasn't, that's a felony. And I, I think that you all know that, so I'll end it right there.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Next speaker, please.
There is no more speakers signed up.
No more speakers. Is anybody else on? I thought that, yeah, I thought that.
Oh, you signed off, I'm sorry.
Rookie mistake, I apologize.
That's okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike McCarthy. I represent Green Mountain Hospitality. Many of you know us better as the Holiday Inn, Front Royal, Little Hands Restaurant, as well as Blue Ridge Shadows Golf Course. I was going to read an excerpt of letter that I had drafted to the council, to Mayor's office, and the council, and, and the like. Instead, trying to keep it brief in there to express our concerns regarding the sudden dissolution of the tourism board, and now we are a ship that is a major industry in our county and our town, our Front Royal, that is running rudderless. We're an organization that is, that has spent thousands of dollars a year marketing, so it's imagined, so you can imagine that when our tourism director was dismissed, and then others in the industry to be dismissing, representing the interests of the community as a whole are being dismissed, we're questioning our, our faith, a little, to say the least, and want to know what the, the council, et cetera, are looking to do in order to put this, to put this to rights. The Shenandoah area brings in, as a whole, from top to bottom, $1.5 billion a year in revenue, and communities to the north and the south of us recognize this and are actively investing in it. I'm going to quote just a little, a little section here from an article called Tourism Expands and Strengthens the Shenandoah Valley Economy from October of 2019. This you can find online under the visitshenandoah.org website, and it goes like this. Expenditures for, for anchor cities throughout the Shenandoah Valley continue to trend up over time. In looking at the most recent available figures, 2018 over 2017, the Virginia Tourism Corporation reports Stalkin is up 5.8%, and that is $51,000 a year in 2018. That's up. Harrisonburg, up 5.3%, which is $131,000 for 2018. Winchester, 4.4%, which is $121,000 in 2018. Lexington, 3.9%, which is $35,000. These expenditures represent direct spending by domestic travelers, including food, accommodations, auto, auto transportation, public transportation, incidental purchases, entertainment, recreation, and travel generated tax revenues. Just as a note, each of these entities citing has an active, professional tourism person leading the charge. We've had a dismissal of our tourism director with no clearly outlined plan as to what we are to do with what will be an estimated, so I have been informed, one half million dollars out there. These, these revenue dollars turn around and bring people in. These revenue dollars are spent to bring people in, which in turn generates income to the citizens of the county and the town. My organization alone employs over 100 people. If we are not turning around and actively marketing and selling in a professional manner that is well thought out, others will turn around and take away our revenues for people who want to be here. There was a thought that was expressed in a prior meeting of, don't worry, as it relates to tourism, they will just come. Rest assured that the mindset of, if you build it, they will come, only happens in movies. In the real world, tourism is built on long-term relationships built by professionals with solid knowledge of the market and the hospitality tourism ministry. Professionals such as these bring together the wants and needs of the traveling public, generating positive memories, and create positive revenues for tomorrow for communities such as ours. I encourage that you look into this, great, greater, and we are more than happy to continue our relationship, partnering with the community as we have done very proudly for well over 12 years that the hotel has been there. And I thank you very much, each and every one of you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Julie, what else? Next out of denied is reports, a report to special committees or town officials or interim town managers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First thing I'd like to do is I'd like to recognize David Jenkins, our Director of Energy Services. He has something he'd like to say.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you all for letting me get some time this afternoon to highlight one of our employees who has graduated from Northwestern Lyman College. But before I call them up, I'd like to just hit on a few of the highlights of what it takes to get, get to where he's at today. So when you're hired with the Energy Service Department, the first thing they do is enroll you in Northwestern Lyman College. For mayor, it's a four and a half year course. It has modules, study modules. Once a month, you're taking a test, which means have to pass the grade to move on to the next module. And also with that, you're also enrolled in the Virginia Maryland Delaware Association, which has a school here in Virginia that is hands-on. So every six months, for one week, you're going to that school, get hands-on training. And then as well to follow up on that, we have 8,000 hours on the job training, accomplishing forms that we fill out in our shop for you to move on to the next step. So it is a very rigorous program and much commendable to pass through. So with all that being said, I'd like to call Mr. Preston Thomas.
Thank you, David. Congratulations. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I don't have anything else directly to report. I did want to address a couple of the statements made this evening to clarify the record. One individual mentioned redundant water line. Why should we be paying for it, as in only the town residents within the, the town limits? That's, that's not necessarily a wholly accurate statement. Dominion Power will be paying for much of the water line. Actually, CHA consultants in August of 2019 said that with the increased water rates and the $3.5 million contribution, that they would be paying for the redundant water line. As we all know, the redundant water line will service the businesses outside of town limits, which are the countless businesses, and, and millions of dollars come in in revenues for those businesses that I, council for over 10 years has been planning to build a redundant water line, and we're fortunate enough this year to be able to get it started. Again, members of council and, and Mr. Mayor, as it relates to these LLCs that Mr. Gabbard continually likes to talk about, I don't know where he gets his list from, but he ought to consider getting a more accurate list. Many of those LLCs aren't even mine. They use my office address where they receive some paperwork. Many of them are closed, and I do stand behind my, my statement, my economic statement when I was mayor and I submitted it. I fully stand behind that document, and I actually walked through with legal counsel in Richmond, walked through every single investment that I was involved in, and he determined that I had filled out accurately. So I know it doesn't, it doesn't play to the crowd, or doesn't, doesn't play to their, the mission of Mr. Gabbard, but those are the facts, members of council. And Mr. McCarthy mentioned that I dissolved the tourism board. He may have misspoke, but I just wanted to let them, let the citizens know that the Joint Tourism Board has not been dissolved. It's actually very active. Matter of fact, there's a meeting this Wednesday, and it's our anticipation that they'll be presenting to this body on the 16th of March at a work session, which I believe is going to be very informative, and is going to give some greater clarity as far as where we're heading for tourism. And as far as, you know, we're, we're running rudderless as it relates to tourism, that too is not an accurate statement. I appreciate, you know, Mr. McCarthy's sentiments as it relates to his desire to continue the promotion for activities that help his business, as he should.
It was said that $80,000 is spent on printed advertising. The correct number is actually $86,200, however, $26,000 is for printing and binding, and there's examples of the maps and so forth that they sent, hand out in visitor center. $22,000 is for advertising, printed and/or digital. $14,000 for co-op advertising, and $24,000 for professional services, case outsourced designs and contracted work. Megan from the visitor center is going to come in and present on the 16th at my request to clear up that information. While we're talking about tourism, I was actually going to read your letter this summer prior. That's an issue. Further, let's see, I also have concerns because in looking over the memorandum of agreements between the town, the board supervisors, it looks like we're basically in violation because we're supposed to give 30-day, written notice, 30 days, any sorts of changes to this, which would include the release of Felicia and a couple of other things. So I do have concerns. This is also why I will not be voting yes for the budget tonight because we do not have a clear-cut plan that I have seen as far as what we're doing next, aside from, we're going to see, and we're going to look at the salaries, and that's the only things I've gotten. And so I want all of the misinformation cleared up, so I asked for Megan to come in and present all of the facts and figures, things you can't argue with because you see them with your own eyes. And have, you know, asked for the Joint Tourism Committee to also be invited, so everyone in the room hear the same information at the same time, because a lot of good things are going on over there as part of Facebook advertising. They were told they could not have Instagram and other things when those were brought up. Now they've been told they can, because I told them they can. So there's a lot of, I have a lot of issues with the tourism. I've been listening to everyone's comments. A majority of it is about tourism, and I understand that. I've had a lot of business owners come to me with great concerns about it, and I just wanted to put all of that information out there.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, I'm glad that Mr. Tidrick addressed the water line issues with Dominion. I'm happy to stick around afterwards and talk about that as well. I think that was Mr. Rappaport, Mr. Gabbard's request. Also, Mr. Gabbard, thank you for reading my email. I do stand behind that. I'm not sure if it was supposed to be a derogatory statement presented by you, but I am excited about the momentum of the town, and I know that sometimes it's hard to see that despite the negativity that gets presented from one side. But on the positive side, now that's written in the record, you don't need a ploy in it, and it didn't cost you anything. So, but thank you for that. And then, also, I did want to mention, and I had this note down before Mr. Tidrick mentioned, but please do come out on March 16th. The Joint Tourism Board will be discussing about some of their ideas, the next steps. And I think that there's been some, again, exciting conversation there, and I think it'd be a great opportunity to hear those ideas and what some of the next steps might be. So again, March 16th, I would encourage everybody to come out.
Where, what?
Julie, what else?
Yes.
The 11th is the joint tourism.
Monday, the 16th, our work session.
They're going to come and speak to us on the 16th, but their meeting, as I shared in the email, I believe was this Wednesday.
It's Wednesday. Sorry. But I'm referring to the same one Latasha had mentioned as well, where they'll be presenting here.
See, I was only told that the visitor center was presenting all of their information in that particular session, and that's what I requested. So I said to invite the joint tourism.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify. I reached out to you three times, and that's what I was going to clarify, is the actual schedule, and there's also discussions about having a joint meeting between the town council and the board of supervisors, where the Joint Tourism Committee will also present at that joint meeting on the 30th of May, or 30th of March, but that meeting has not been confirmed yet.
Yes. So I just wanted to start off by saying that on weekday, February 29, I attended a bingo at the Elks Lodge for the Phoenix Project, and it was a great afternoon. I actually won one game, I believe. But it was a great opportunity to raise some money for something very important, I believe. And I wanted to also share that we, one of our town staff, our captain, Crystal Klein, was really without a call. Mrs. Dean, the life of the party was she, not I. Got lots of, I think she actually helped raise a lot of money on her own, just on her own. So I just wanted to say it was exciting to see our members, our staff, out in the community working to help the community as well. The next thing I wanted to bring up is actually what everybody, it seems like in the world, is talking about right now, the coronavirus. And I don't have any more information than anybody else does, but I think there's a lot of fear, and even tonight, I was discussing earlier, there's a lot of misinformation. And I think, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Oates, somebody said that, someone spoke to the board of supervisors about it, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, and was that Jeff Green?
It was Dr. Green.
Dr. Green, okay. I was just wondering if staff could possibly request him come and speak before the council to give our citizens an opportunity to hear the same information that he shared with you all. I think that in the days and weeks to come, there's going to be a lot of hysteria, and I, you know, I'd like to see more information from people that have the facts, and so I thought that would be a good opportunity. And then the next thing I wanted to ask Mr. Tidrick about is, there was a mention about emails going to a black hole about tourism, and I thought I remembered before somebody mentioning where, about that, so could you clear that for me?
Yes, ma'am. Now, all those emails, and Ms. Pressley can attest, they come to Ms. Pressley, and we answer or we look through them daily, and so they're not going into a black hole. We're monitoring all those tourism emails that are coming to Felicia. They're being forwarded to her.
Sorry, tourism emails, but in reference to the phone that was cut off before she was dismissed, those are not going to email. Where are those phone calls coming?
The phone is not, correct. The emails, I think you mentioned.
That's what I was talking about.
Yeah, you mentioned emails.
Yep, I said communications, but yeah, it was mostly the phone calls, when people are making phone calls, they're not getting anywhere.
Julie, what else to say? Laura, are you finished?
Yep, I'm done, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment on the coronavirus, since it feels like it's the story of my life right now, too. But I'm really glad that you brought that up, Councilman Cockrell. Dr. Green is with the VDH, and I think that you might actually find a quick response and eager participants if we reach out to Valley Health, considering that they're going to be being the entities that we're going to be probably going to when you're concerned about potential coronavirus. There's a lot, a lot of work going on around that right now, and I'm sure that there would be representatives that would come and speak to the town and county and make sure that we get the right information for testing, what's going on, how the facilities are handling it, and that kind of thing, so that the community is aware of the precautions that have been taken. I'm pretty sure that they'd be very happy to do so.
Great, and that's, as I've noticed, other places, obviously bigger cities and their governments reaching out.
And Dr. Green is on weekly calls with them.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Next item denied is before the mayor. I have a proclamation here this evening I want to read before the group here this evening. It's called the Women's History Month. Whereas American women of every race, class, ethnic, group, background has paid historical contributions to growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas American women have played the tenuous role of critical economics, cultural and social role in every sphere of life of the nation by constructing a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. Whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation of providing the majority of volunteer labor force of the nation. Whereas Americans were practically important, particularly important to the steps of the early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institution of our nation. Whereas American women of every race, class, ethnic, group, background served as the governing leaders in the forefront of every major progressive society and socialist change movement. Whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. Whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights and suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in abolitionist movement, emancipation movement, industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which creates a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite the contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Therefore, it is resolved by the mayor on behalf of the town council and the town of Front Royal that March of 20th is designated as Woman History Month in the town of Front Royal. Would the Girl Scouts please come forward and present this proclamation? Thank you.
Can we have the ladies of the council, please, join us?
Only for all cooks.
I think my first idea, do you have the cookies?
Which one? Let me get in here. My chair just keeps going down, so maybe you won't be able to see me at the end of the evening. That's the end of my report. The next item denied is proposals or additions released to the agenda. Next item denied is item number eight, consent agenda items, the five on the consent agenda. The first one is lay on committee mission statement and policy revisions. Second one is Women's History Month, proclamation which has been read. Number C is proclamation of government purchasing bond. Number D is a vehicle being reading handheld devices for the police department, I believe. Third one is encroachment license for a 14-116 East Main Street handicap ramp and landing, MOPO, and co-shoe and brace company. Do I hear motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approved consent agenda items as presented.
Do I hear second? Does anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda? Not Mrs. Pressley, would you give us a roll call?
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie Lassent?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion care. Next item denied is public hearing, setting the fiscal year 2020, 2021 tax rate. Ms. Pressley, would you read some of your, some of your?
Council's requested to adopt a real property tax rate at 13 cents per 100 assessed value, which represents a decrease of half a cent from the current year's tax rate and the personal property tax rate at 64 cents per 100 assessed value, which represents no increase over the current year's rate. And the personal property tax relief rate for qualifying vehicles at a rate to be set by town council at future time pursuant to Virginia Code. And as all owners of qualified vehicles will be notified under Town Department Personal Property Tax Bill. Council is further requested to affirm on its first reading an ordinance amendment to Chapter 75-44C to reflect such change as presented.
Let's have a look at the public hearing. Is anyone here who would like to speak here this evening? Is anyone who would like to speak this evening? Mr. Gabbard, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul Gabbard, 1521 Battery Drive. Reducing the tax rate and doing the budget the way it is is going to put this town in hold for the next five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years. Money is being taken from one category and put into another category. From what I, from the way I understand it, there's money being taken out of the general fund, put into another fund, which leaves the general fund underneath of what the law states needs to be. I may be wrong, but I would like you all to check that out. But the way things are being taken all around in this budget and put in different categories, this isn't going to make, I don't know, I don't know where the town manager thinks this is a good budget, because this is going to harm this town for several years. Instead of reducing the tax rate, it should have been raised. We are probably three to four cents under Strasburg. We cannot, we can't go on 13, on 13 cents, a tax rate of 13 cents. It's just, it's not possible. It's not going to happen. You can't do all of the work that is being discussed up here for 13 cents. The water line out on the, just to clarify the water line, I know that it's going to be paid back by the, by the water increases from Dominion Electric, but did you ever think that maybe those increases in water rates could go for paying, paying for the INI, the upgrades on the sewer system? Why do those, why does that increase, water increase, have to go for paying off what Dominion Electric should be paying? Stop taking it out on the citizens of Front Royal. Thank you.
Like, anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Anyone else? Last time, anyone else who would like to speak? Turn it over to council. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council adopt a real property tax rate of 13 cents per $100 assessed value, which represents a decrease of half, half, five cents from the current tax year's rate, I'm sorry, I got sent, and a real, and a personal property tax rate of 64 cents per 100 assessed value, which represents no increase over the current year's rates. And the personal property tax relief rate for qualifying vehicles at a rate to be set by the town council at future time pursuant to Virginia Code 58.1-3524. I further move that council affirm on its first reading an ordinance amendment to Chapter 75-44C to reflect the adopted real and personal property tax rates as presented.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Motion of a second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is, this is kind of ironic that I have to make a statement about kind of offending a tax decrease, because this will be my fifth voting year on a budget, being on council. And every year that I've been up here, this council has received a backlash from wanting to increase taxes. You might recall a few years ago, we had a very spirited debate up here about increasing the tax just a half a cent for a police department, which at that time was necessary so that we could facilitate the purchase and development of a new police department, and we, we as a council, got berated for that. Now, here we are, a few years later, not only holding taxes flat, but figured out, did what was asked of us, to figure out ways to reduce our budget, keep tax rates flat, and in this particular case, reduce it by a half a cent. And I'm not going to lie, I thought that most people, and still believe that most people, would be excited about the fact that one entity across the Commonwealth is actually reducing their taxes by half a cent. And I do appreciate the fact that we could raise taxes to do more within the town, but there's a lot to contend with when you have to worry about utilities, increase taxes in the town, increase taxes in the county, and that continues to go up year over year. I think there's been a lot, a lot of rework to our budget this year in our capital plan, and I'm excited that we're going to be able to actually reduce our taxes by half a cent. Now, with regard to tourism, which I know
which at that time was necessary so that we could facilitate the, the purchase and development of a new police department. And we, we as a council got berated for that. Now, here we are a few years later, not only holding taxes flat, but figured out, did what was asked of us, to figure out ways to reduce our budget, keep tax rates flat, and in this particular case, reduce it by a half a cent. And I'm not going to lie, I thought that most people, and still believe that most people, would be excited about the fact that one entity across the Commonwealth is actually reducing their taxes by half a cent. And I do appreciate the fact that we could raise taxes to do more within the town, but there's a lot to contend with when you have to worry about utilities, increase taxes in the town, increase taxes in the county, and that continues to go up year over year. I think there's been a lot, a lot of rework to our budget this year in our capital plan. And I'm excited that we're going to be able to actually reduce our taxes by half a cent. Now, with regard to tourism, which I know is going to be a topic of conversation, Council, Councilman Thompson brought this up. I still say what I said a few weeks back, which is, if we want to debate on how to fund, fund a little bit more tourism, or how we're going to do that, that's okay. My ask of our tax rate decreasing is that we stay committed to our current budget and not go back and say, we need more money. We need another half cent, we need another cent. If you want to fund a particular department more, okay. Let's just decide where, what else is going to go in the budget. Otherwise, it can just become a wish list of everything we want in the town. And believe me, we can continue justifying anything and everything in a budget to raise taxes. That's the easy part. The hard part is trying to decide what can, what can we do without, or what can we change, probably more appropriately, so that we can maintain the taxes where they are, in this case, decrease them for the benefit of our community. Because of that reason, I will be fully supporting a half a cent decrease to thirteen cents.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I voted previously no, because I wanted to maintain a thirteen and a half for a lot of reasons. I wanted to maintain the tourism department. I wanted to maintain infrastructure. Two years ago and ever since, I've been fighting to get, along with the mayor, more work done on infrastructure rather than this slurring mix and some of this foolishness that I've been seeing. So now we come down to, we've already voted thirteen cents. It's probably going to be a negative vote on my point tonight. I still have these concerns. Sixty thousand dollars could go for some of these things that we're paying for, or requesting for. Two years ago, Mr. Conley, before he left council, he and I were working on a plan to work some of these reserve dollars to do INI, to do infrastructure. And just exactly how many millions of dollars was in reserve, which seemed to be a hard answer to get. It was only until Mr. Tidrick came that finally somebody started pushing to find out where the reserve dollars were that we could spend. So tonight I will vote no again. It'll be a negative vote, because it's already seen that we've advertised thirteen cents. So thirteen cents is the way it will be. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just for clarification, when you say thirteen cents is the way it's going to be, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, you advertise for thirteen cents. I can't increase it, I can only go down. That's the way I understand the rules. So it's already been basically approved. I wanted to maintain thirteen and a half until we fully review the budget and then come back. If we all agreed that sixteen thousand, or sixty thousand dollars would be taken out of the budget, then so be it. Then thirteen cents would have been the applicable number. But everybody voted thirteen cents was going to be the way it was going to be, instead of maintaining thirteen and a half until we had a full review of the budget, which we have not had at this point, other than going home. It's been presented to us. I've taken it home and looked at it, and I've got some concerns. So that's where I'm at at this point. That's why my vote is the way it is tonight.
After we had our budget discussion, and I went over to somebody who'd been reviewing about the visitor center and so forth, I sent an email to my council that said I was not going to vote reaffirmative for any sort of taxes, whether it was thirteen or thirteen and a half, unless we had a clear, solid plan for tourism and for our visitor center. Seeing as how we don't really have that right now, I'm going to vote no.
Anyone else?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, yes. So again, like, I think that we have an opportunity, if we're arguing about how to put more funds into the visitor center, then outside of continually raising taxes to be able to compensate for that, what are the recommendations to fund it appropriately, the way that you're looking for, Councilman Seelock or Councilman Thompson? As far as the plan of reviewing the budget, I do think we reviewed this budget. I've had this book for about a month, where we've been able to look at all revenues, projected revenues, we've looked at the expense line by line. If there's a particular recommendation that we're wanting to make as a council, then make it. If it's that we need a couple one hundred thousand dollars for tourism funding, then say so, so that we have an opportunity to adjust it. But ever, other than that, other than the tourism area, I haven't heard any recommendations for making significant changes to the budget that has been fully presented to council.
So I'd like to go ahead and address that. As far as the tourism and stuff and so forth goes, the thing is, yes, we got an eagle dive view breakdown. I think what Bill and I wanted was more of an education. So in order for me to get that education about tourism, what's actually going on, I had to go visit a visitor center, and that's why I'm asking for them to come in and give a full presentation, so we're all educated on it. Because right now, just looking at it, like, I would not know everything that the tourism department does. And because at some point, someone said that our town website is outsourced, but it's not. It's in-house, it's part of the CDD grant. But did you know that?
That it's outsourced?
No, it's not outsourced.
No, I've never, I've never heard somebody, no, I've never heard somebody say it was outsourced.
Yeah, it was in the one meeting that's on the road with Bayner. But yeah, so that was a problem of misinformation going on on Wednesday. I dictated before making a vote, I was hoping that would, but it wasn't going to come this fast. But it, it came up, we'll have our second reading, and by then I think we have more information to make better decisions.
Well, so to be clear, we won't have a second reading if council votes us down.
Oh, of course, right.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Let me make it clear, if you vote it down, then you have no tax rate for this year.
That's why I bring this up. So even, again, I, I, you're, I know this isn't the way you're saying it, so I don't want to sound like it's going to, but it's like holding the budget hostage for the tourism. So what we're agreeing upon is the rate increase, which I almost think if the tourism budget was set the way that you wanted, or Councilman Seelock wanted it, you'd still vote for the thirteen cents if we're able to say, this is where the funding was coming from. Because it doesn't sound like, at least I haven't heard you say, that you're concerned about lowering the taxes, you're concerned about the direction of tourism. What I'm saying is, I'm okay with that. I want to stay committed to the thirteen cents. If we want to decide how to change that budget to reflect the appropriate funding to tourism the way that you're looking for, I'm okay with that. It's just, I want to be able to take what we currently have and make a change to put that fund. So if we're talking about, I'm rounding the number, sixty thousand dollars, then where in the budget do you want to remove it from to put it in tourism? If that's what we're going to be arguing about, but I still want to stay committed to that, that thirteen cents. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. That's the discussion I want, and I'm willing to do that.
But we can do that also before the second reading.
That's why I'm bringing it up now. I'm very concerned that we hired a person to be community development. It became tourism rather than community development. It was a dual role position. There's a problem. I hear rudderists. Well, we were rudderists. Council had asked for this individual to appear before us on local occasions and tell us what community development she was working on. Never happened. I am very optimistic about this joint tourism board. I want to see the county and town tourism dollars going in a positive direction. And I will entertain any councilman up here to discuss what we're going to do to change this budget. That's my whole point tonight.
Mr. Tidrick, would you like to?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, or members of council. I for one, I don't necessarily like this process. I don't, I don't like the way we have to vote on the tax rate and then we vote on the budget. I, I hear, I hear the concerns of, of Ms. Thompson and Ms. Mr. Seelock. They have concerns about the budget, and I, those are some legitimate concerns. And, and I am, I am, I for one am very committed, and staff is very committed, to walk through the budget and, and as many meetings as we need to take, Mr. Mayor, members of council, prior to the approval of the budget, which would happen in April. Work could go as late as mid-May. Tonight, and I know you know this, but tonight's the vote on the rate, which is separate than the actual budget. And if there's still the question, I believe it needs four council members to pass the budget, or the rate, rather, we could table, table the vote for another meeting. And by that meeting, we'll have the joint work session with the tourism board. We can bring it back. BJ, that's, we can do that, can't we?
We can bring it back, we'll have you in the commissioner's office and see how it's going to affect our deadlines with the tax rate.
So we can't table it?
It can be tabled, but I don't know, I don't have the left to put our due date back or not. I can do it with the commissioner's office to find that out, but I can do that in the morning.
We could theoretically have a special meeting if we need it.
I, I think we have to re-approve that.
Well, if it's through two in votes, then it fails to pass? Or what, I mean, it's still a majority vote, it's just not quorum? Does that in effect table it, I guess is my question.
Well, actually, setting the tax rate, I think I may have misunderstood, or misinterpreted. What the charter says, a majority of the council shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. No ordinance shall be passed or resolution adopted for its, having for its object the appropriation of money or the levy of taxes and licenses, except by the concurrence of four members. But since we're just setting a tax rate, I think we only need a vote of three to be, to set the rate. We would need four to actually pass the budget. So I think we can have a vote of three to pass the rate. So I think I advise the town manager.
That's, to my, to my original point to Councilman Seelock and Councilman Thompson, is that I'm committed to figuring out what we want to do with the tourism budget. I don't, don't think you're going to, well, you're not going to fight to me on moving around sixty thousand dollars. Where I am, feel like I'm more drawn to our line is on the thirteen cents and trying to get that moved forward tonight, and then happy to break down the budget however we want to after that.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench in anything that we're doing. I would like to hear the council say that we're going to get some real consideration to our tourism dollars. Like I said, I'm very positive on this joint tourism board going forward. I, I like that concept, but there's still some concerns dollar wise that I have, and I want, I want the voice to be heard. So in that case, to keep it moving forward, I would change my vote to yes tonight.
Anyone else?
Yes. It said that eighty thousand dollars is spent on printed advertising. The correct number is actually eighty-six thousand two hundred. However, twenty-six thousand is for printing and binding, and there's examples of the maps and so forth that they sent, hand out in visitor center. Twenty-two thousand is for advertising, printed and or digital. Fourteen thousand for co-op advertising, and twenty-four thousand for professional services, case, outsourced designs, and contracted work. Megan from the visitor center is going to come in and present on the sixteenth at my request to clear up that information while we're talking about tourism. I was actually going to review her letter, Mrs. McCarthy, but you came in. But there were some things on there that were concerning about the Pittsburgh Trade Show and how all of the information that had been handed out to potential visitors had political contact information on it, and when those people reached back, they're not, it goes into a black hole, we don't know where it goes. That's a concern. And it's been mentioned, oh, and northern Virginia people can come down, yes, you can come down. It's going to be a day trip. You're not spending the night, you're not getting the lodging taxes that fund our tourism. That's an issue. Other, let's see, I also, I also have concerns, because in looking over the memorandum of agreements between the town, the board supervisors, it looks like we're basically in violation, because we're supposed to give thirty days, written notice, thirty days, any sorts of changes to this, which would include the release of Clarissa, and a couple of other things. So I do have concerns. This is also why I will not be voting yes for the budget tonight, because we do not have a clear cut plan that I have seen as far as what we're doing next aside from, we're going to see, and we're going to look at the salaries, and that's, that's the only things I've gotten. And so I want all of the misinformation cleared up. So I asked for Megan to come in and present all the facts and figures, things you can argue with, because you see them with your eyes. And have, and I've asked for the joint tourism committee to also be invited, so everyone in the room hears the same information at the same time, because a lot of good things are going on over there as part of Facebook advertising. They were told they could not have Instagram and other things when those were brought up. Now they've been told they can, because I told them they can. So there's a lot of, I have a lot of issues with the tourism. I've been listening to everyone's comments, a majority of it is about tourism, and I understand that. I've had a lot of business owners come to me with great concerns about it, and I just wanted to put all of that information out there.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, I'm glad that Mr. Tidrick addressed the water line issues with Dominion. I, I'm happy to stick around afterwards and talk about that as well. I think that was Mr. Rappaport, Mr. Gabbard's request. Also, Mr. Gabbard, thank you for reading in my email. I do stand behind that, I'm not sure if it was supposed to be a derogatory statement presented by you, but I am excited about the momentum of the town, and I know that sometimes it's hard to see that despite the negativity that gets presented from one side. But on, on the positive side, now let's write it into the record, you don't need to FOIA it, and it didn't cost you anything. So, I think, and then, also, I did want to mention, and I had this note down before Mr. Tidrick mentioned, but please do come out on March sixteenth. The joint tourism board will be discussing about some of their ideas and next step, next steps. And I think that there's been some, again, exciting conversation there. And I think it'd be a great opportunity to hear, hear those ideas and what some of the next steps might be. So again, March sixteenth, I would encourage everybody to come out.
Where, what? The eleventh is the joint tourism.
Mr. Tidrick, the sixteenth is the joint tourism committee?
Monday, Monday, the sixteenth, our work session.
They're going to come and speak to us on the sixteenth, but their meeting, as I shared in the email, I believe was this week.
It's Wednesday, March.
Yeah, Wednesday, November.
But I'm referring to the same one Latasha had mentioned as well, where they're two percent here.
See, I was only told that the visitor center was presenting all of their information in that particular session, and that's what I requested. So I didn't, I said to invite the joint tourism.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify. I reached out to you three times, and that's what I was going to clarify, is the actual scheduling. And there's also discussions about having a joint meeting between the town council and the board of supervisors, where the joint tourism committee will also present at that joint meeting on the thirtieth of May, or thirtieth of March, but that meeting has not been confirmed yet.
Yes, so I just wanted to start off by saying that on weekday, February twenty, I attended a bingo at the Upps Latch for the Phoenix Project. And it was a, it was a great afternoon. I actually won one game, I believe. But it was a great opportunity to, to raise some money for something very important, I believe. And I wanted to also share that we, one of our town staff, our captain, Crystal Klein, was really what I would call, Mrs. Dean, the life of the party, was she not? Got lots of, I, I think she actually helped raise a lot of money on her own, just on her. So I just wanted to say, it was exciting to see our members, our staff out in the community, working to help the community as well. The next thing I wanted to bring up is actually what everybody, it seems like in the world, is talking about right now, the coronavirus. And I don't have any more information than anybody else does, but I, I think there's a lot of fear, and even tonight, I was discussing earlier, there's a lot of misinformation. And I think, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Oates, somebody said that, someone spoke to the, the board of supervisors about it, yes or no? Yes, and was that Jeff Green?
Uh, it's Dr. Green.
Dr. Green, okay. I was just wondering if staff could possibly request him come and speak before the council to give our citizens an opportunity to hear the same information that he shared with you all. I think that in the days and weeks to come, there's going to be a lot of hysteria, and I, you know, I'd, I'd like to see more information from people that have the facts, and so I thought that would be a good opportunity. And then the next thing I wanted to ask Mr. Tidrick about is, there was a mention about emails going to a black hole about tourism, and, and I, I thought I remember. emails going to a black hole about tourism, and, and I, I thought I remembered before somebody mentioning where, about that, so could you clear that, that for me?
Yes, ma'am. Now, all those emails, and Ms. Presley can attest, they come to Ms. Presley, and we answer or we look through them daily, and so they're not going into a black hole, we're monitoring all those tourism emails that are coming to, to Felicia, they're being forwarded to her.
Sorry, tourism emails, but in reference to the phone that was cut off before she was dismissed, those are not going to email. Where are those phone calls going?
Yeah, the phone, the phone is not, correct. The emails, I think you mentioned.
That's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, you mentioned emails.
Yep, I said communications, but yeah, it was mostly the phone calls, when people are making phone calls, they're not getting anywhere.
Anyone else to say?
Yep, I'm done, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment on the coronavirus, since it feels like it's the story of my life right now too. But I'm really glad that you brought that up, Councilman Cockrell. Dr. Green is with the B D H, and I think that you might actually find a quick response and eager participants if we reach out to Valley Health, considering that they're gonna be, being, being the entities that we're gonna be probably going to when you're concerned about potential coronavirus. There's a lot, a lot of work going on around that right now, and I'm sure that there'd be representatives that would come and, and speak to the town and county, and, and make sure that we get the right information for testing, what's going on, how the facilities are handling it, that kind of thing, so that the community is aware of the precautions that have been taken. I'm, I'm pretty sure that they'd be very happy to do so.
Great, and that's, and that's, as I've noticed, other places, obviously bigger cities and their governments reaching out.
And Dr. Green is on weekly calls with them, so.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Next slide, the ninety-fourth mayor. I have a proclamation here this evening, I want to read before the group here this evening. It's called the Women's History Month. Whereas American women of every race, class, ethnic group, background has made historical contribution to growth and strength of our nation in countless, countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas American women have played a tenured role of critical economics, cultural and social role in every sphere of life of the nation by constructing a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. Whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation of providing the majority of volunteer labor force of the nation. Whereas Americans were practically important, particularly important to the steps of the early charitable, philanthropic, and culture institution of our nation. Whereas American women of every race, class, ethnic group, background served as early leaders in the forefront of making a progressive society and social change movement. Whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. Whereas American women have, have been leading not only in securing their own rights and suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in abolitionist movement, emancipation movement, industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite the contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Therefore, it is resolved by the mayor on behalf of the town council and the town of Herroyl that March of twentieth is designated as Woman History Month in the town of Herroyl. Would the Girl Scouts please come forward, and I can present this proclamation? Thank you.
Can we have the ladies of the council please join us?
Only for all cooks.
I think my first lady, do you have the cookies?
Which one? Let me get in here. My chair, the chair just keeps going down, so maybe you won't be able to see me at the end of the evening. That's the end of my report, the next slide is the vice president's proposal of additions or releases to the agenda. Next slide, the vice president's agenda number eight, consent agenda, I think, five on the consent agenda. The first one is lay on committee mission statement and policy revisions. Second one is Women's History Month, proclamation which I just read. Number C is proclamation of government purchasing month. Number D is a vehicle being reading handheld devices for the police department, I believe. Third one is a personal license for a fourteen detachment, one sixteen East Main Street, handicap ramp and landing, MOPO and Co Shoe and Brace Company. Do you hear motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move the council to approve consent agenda items as presented.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Does anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda? Not Mrs. President, would you give us a roll call?
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie's absent? Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion here. Next slide, the vice president's hearing, setting the fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one tax rate. Ms. Presley, would you read a summary of your, summary?
Council's requested to adopt a real property tax rate at thirteen cents per one hundred assessed value, which represents a decrease of half a cent from the current year's tax rate and the personal property tax rate at sixty-four cents per one hundred assessed value, which represents no increase over the current year's rate. And the personal property tax relief rate for qualifying vehicles at a rate to be set by town council at future time pursuant to Virginia code. And as all owners of qualified vehicles will be notified on their town apartment or personal property tax bill. Council is further requested to affirm on its first reading and ordinance amendment to chapter seventy-five dash forty-four C to reflect such change as presented.
Mr. Mayor, open the public hearing, is anyone here who would like to speak here this evening? Is anyone who would like to speak this evening? Mr. Gabbard, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Paul Gabbard, one fifty-one battery drive. Reducing the tax rate and doing the budget the way it is, is gonna put this town in hold for the next five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years. Money is being taken from one, one category and put into another category. From what I, from the way I understand it, there's money being taken out of the general fund, put into another fund, which leaves a general fund underneath of what the law states needs to be. I may be wrong, but I would, I would like you all to check that out. But the way things are being taken all around in this budget and put in different categories, this isn't gonna make, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know where the town manager thinks this is a good budget, because this is going to harm this town for several years. Instead of reducing the tax rate, it should have been raised. We are probably three to four cents under Strasburg. We cannot, we can't go on thirteen, on thirteen cents, a tax rate of thirteen cents. It's just, it's not possible, it's not gonna happen. You can't do all of the work that is being discussed up here for thirteen cents. The water line out on the, just to, just to clarify the water line, I know that it's gonna be paid back by the, by the water increases from Dominion Electric, but did you ever think that maybe those increases in water rates could go for paying, paying for the INI, the upgrades on the, on the sewer system? Why do those, why does that, that increase, water increase, have to go for paying off what, what Dominion Electric should be paying? Stop taking it out on the citizens of Herroyl. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? Anyone else? Last time, anyone else who'd like to speak? Turn it over to council, their air motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council to adopt a real property tax rate of thirteen cents per hundred dollars assessed value, which represents a decrease of half, half, five cents from the current tax year's rate, I'm sorry, that's a, and a real, and a personal property tax rate of sixty-four cents per hundred assessed value, which represents no increase over the current year's rates. And the personal property tax relief rate for qualifying vehicles at a rate to be set by the town council at future time pursuant to Virginia code five eight point one dash thirty-five twenty-four. I further move that council affirm on its first reading and ordinance amendment to chapter seventy-five dash forty-four C to reflect the adopted real and personal property tax rates as presented.
Do you hear a second?
A second.
Motion and second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is, this is kind of ironic that I have to make a statement about kind of defending a tax decrease, because this will be my fifth voting year on a budget, being on council, and every year that I've been up here, this council has, has received a backlash from wanting to increase taxes. You might recall a few years ago, we had a very spirited debate up here about increasing the tax just a half a cent for a new police department, which at that time was necessary so that we could facilitate the, the purchase and development of a new police department, and we, we as a council got berated for that. Now here we are, a few years later, not only holding taxes flat, but figured out, did what was asked of us, to figure out ways to reduce our budget, keep tax rates flat, and in this particular case, reduce it by a half a cent. And I'm not gonna lie, I thought that most people, and still believe that most people, would be excited about the fact that one entity across the Commonwealth is actually reducing their taxes by half a cent. And I do appreciate the fact that we could raise taxes to do more within the town, but there's a lot to contend with when you have to worry about utilities, increase taxes in the town, increase taxes in the county, and that continues to go up year over year. I think there's been a lot, a lot of rework to our budget this year in our capital planning, and I'm excited that we're gonna be able to actually reduce our taxes by half a cent. Now, with regard to tourism, which I know is gonna be a topic of conversation, council, Councilman Thompson brought this up. I still say what I said a few weeks back, which is, if we want to debate on how to fund, fund a little bit more tourism, or how we're gonna do that, that's okay. My ask of our tax rate decreasing is that we stay committed to our current budget and not go back and say, we need more money, we need another half cent, we need another cent. If you want to fund a particular department more, okay, let's just decide where, what else is gonna go in the budget. Otherwise, it can just become a wish list of everything we want in the town, and believe me, we can continue justifying anything and everything in a budget to raise taxes. That's the easy part. The hard part is trying to decide what can, what can we do without, or what can we change, probably more appropriately, so that we can maintain the taxes where they are, in this case, decrease them for the benefit of our community. Because of that reason, I will be fully supporting a half cent decrease to thirteen cents.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Mayor. I voted previously no, because I wanted to maintain a thirteen and a half for a lot of reasons. I wanted to maintain the tourism department, I wanted to maintain infrastructure. Two years ago, and ever since, I've been fighting to get, along with the mayor, more work done on infrastructure rather than this slurring mix and some of this foolishness that I've been seeing. So now we come down to, we've already voted thirteen cents. I, it's probably gonna be a negative vote on my point tonight. I still have these concerns. Sixty thousand dollars could go for some of these things that we're paying for, or requesting for. Two years ago, Mr. Conley, before he left council, he and I were working on a plan to work some of these reserve dollars to do INI, to do infrastructure, and just exactly how many millions of dollars was in reserve, which seemed to be a hard answer to get. It was only until Mr. Tidrick came that finally somebody started pushing to find a word that the reserve dollars were that we could spend. So tonight I will vote no again, it'll be a negative vote, because it's already seen that we've advertised thirteen cents, so thirteen cents is the way it will be. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just for clarification, when you say thirteen cents is the way it's gonna be, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, you advertise for thirteen cents. I can't increase it, I can only go down. That's the way I understand the rules. So it's already been basically approved. I wanted to maintain thirteen and a half until we fully review the budget, and then come back, if we all agreed that sixteen thousand, or sixty thousand dollars should be taken out of the budget, then so be it, then thirteen cents would have been the applicable number. But everybody voted thirteen cents was gonna be the way it was gonna be, instead of maintaining thirteen and a half until we had a full review of the budget, which we have not had at this point, other than going home, it's been presented to us, I've taken it home and looked at it, and I've got some concerns. So that's where I'm at at this point, that's why my vote is the way it is tonight.
After we had our budget discussion, and I went, I just went back and reviewed about the visitor center and so forth, I sent an email to my council that said I was not going to vote reaffirmative for any sort of taxes, whether it was thirteen or thirteen and a half, unless we had a clear, solid plan for tourism and for our visitor center. Seeing as how we don't really have that right now, I'm going to vote no.
Anyone else?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, yes. So again, like, I think that we have an opportunity, if we're arguing about how to put, put more funds into the visitor center, then outside of continually raising taxes to be able to compensate for that, what are the recommendations to fund it, appropriately the way that you're looking for, Councilman Seelock or Councilman Thompson? As far as the plan of reviewing the budget, I do think we reviewed this budget, I've had this book for about a month, where we've been able to look at all revenues, projected revenues, we've looked at the expense line by line. If there's a particular recommendation that we're wanting to make as a council, then make it. If it's that we need a couple one hundred thousand dollars in tourism, fine, then say so, so that we have an opportunity to adjust it. But ever, other than that, other than the tourism area, I haven't heard any recommendations for making significant changes in the budget that have been fully presented to council.
So I'd like to go ahead and address that. As far as the tourism and stuff and so forth goes, the thing is, yes, we gotta eagle dive view breakdown. I think what Bill and I wanted was more of an education. So in order for me to get that education about tourism, what's actually going on, I had to go visit a visitor center, and that's why I'm asking for them to come in and give a full presentation, so we're all educated on it. Because right now, just looking at it, like, I would not know everything that the tourism department does, and, because at some point, someone said that our town website is outsourced, but it's not, it's in-house, it's per the C D D grant. But did you know that?
That it's outsourced?
No, it's not outsourced.
No, I've never, I've never heard somebody, no, no, I've never heard somebody say it was outsourced.
Yeah, it was in the one meeting that's on the roll of data, but yeah, so that was a problem, a lot of misinformation going on, I wanted to be educated before making a vote, I was hoping that would work, but it wasn't gonna come this fast, but it, it came up, we'll hover second reading, and by then I think we'll have more information and make better decisions. And by then, I think we'll have more information to make better decisions.
Well, so to be clear, we won't have a second reading if council votes us down.
Oh, of course, right.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Let me make it clear, if you vote it down, then you have no tax rate for this year.
That's why I'm bringing this up. So even, again, I, I, you're repeating. I know this isn't the way you're saying it, so I don't want it to sound like it's going to be this, but it's like holding the budget hostage for the tourism. So what we're agreeing upon is the rate increase, which I almost think if the tourism budget was set the way that you want it or Councilman Seelock wanted it, you'd still vote for the thirteen cents if we're able to say, this is where the funding was coming from. Because it doesn't sound like, at least I haven't heard you say, that you're concerned about lowering your taxes, you're concerned about the direction of tourism. What I'm saying is, I'm okay with that. I want to stay committed to the thirteen cents. If we want to decide how to change that budget to reflect the appropriate funding to tourism the way that you're looking for, I'm okay with that. It's just, I want to be able to table what currently have and make a change to put that fund. So if we're talking about, I'm rounding the number, sixty thousand dollars, then where in the budget do you want to move it from to put it in tourism? If that's what we're going to be arguing about, but I still want to stay committed to that, that thirteen cents. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. That's the discussion I want and I want to demand.
But we can do that also before the second reading.
That's why I'm bringing it up now. I'm very concerned that we are person to be community development. It became tourism rather than community development. It was a dual role position. There's a problem. I hear rudderous. Well, we were rudderous. Council had asked for this individual to appear before us on multiple occasions and tell us what community development she was working on. Never happened. I am very optimistic about this joint tourism board. I want to see the county and town tourism dollars going in a positive direction. And I will entertain any councilman up here to discuss what we're going to do to change this budget. That's my whole point tonight.
Mr. Pedrick, would you like to address that?
Mr. Mayor, or members of council, I for one, I don't necessarily like this process. I don't, I don't like the way we have to vote on the tax rate and then we vote on the budget. I, I hear, I hear the concerns of, of Ms. Thompson and Mr. Seelock. They have concerns about the budget, and I, those, some legitimate concerns. And, and I am, I am, I for one am very committed, and staff is very committed, to walk through the budget and, and as many meetings as we need to take, Mr. Mayor, members of council, prior to the approval of the budget, which would happen in April. Work could go as late as mid-May. Tonight, and I know you know this, but tonight's the vote on the rate, which is separate than the actual budget. And if there's still the question, I believe it needs four council members to pass the budget, or the rate, rather, we could table, table the vote for another meeting. And by that meeting, we'll have the joint work session with the tourism board. We can bring it back. BJ, that's, we can do that, can't we?
We can bring it back via the commissioner's office and see how that's going to affect our deadlines with the tax rate.
So we can't table it?
It can be tabled, but I don't know, I don't have the flat to push our due date back or not. I'll have to go to the commissioner's office and find that out. I can do that tomorrow.
We, we could theoretically have a special meeting if we need it.
I, I think we have to re-advocate.
Well, if it's three two in votes, then it fails to pass? Or what, I mean, it's still a majority vote. It's just not a quorum? Does that in effect table it, I guess is my question.
Well, actually setting the tax rate, I think I may have misunderstood, or misinterpreted. What, what the charter says, a majority of the council shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. No ordinance shall be passed or resolution adopted for its, having for its object the appropriation of money or the levy of taxes and licenses, except by the concurrence of four members. But since we're just setting a tax rate, I think we only need a vote of three to be, to set the rate. We would need four to actually pass the budget. So I think we can have a vote of three to pass the rate. So I think I advise the town manager.
That's the, to my, to my original point to Councilman Seelock and Councilman Thompson, is that I'm committed to figuring out what we want to do with the tourism budget. I don't, don't think you're going to, well, you're not going to fight for me on moving around sixty thousand dollars. Where I am, feel like I'm more drawn to our line is on the thirteen cents and trying to get that moved forward tonight. And then happy to break down the budget however we want to after that.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench in anything that we're doing. I would like to hear the council say that we're going to get some real consideration to our tourism dollars. Like I said, I'm very positive on this joint tourism board going forward. I, I like that concept, but there's still some concerns dollar wise that I have, and I want, I want the voice to be heard. So in that case, to keep it moving forward, I would change my vote to yes tonight.
Anyone else?
Yes. One, I have a question. I don't know if we know the answer to this. Health insurance rates for our employees, do we, do, I know, for some, that keeps sticking in my mind that that could, that could really throw a monkey wrench in everything if it's higher than what we thought a part of our budget.
Yes, Ms. Anthony, I've had.
Cockrell.
I'm sorry.
I was a Yankee friend.
Sorry. I've, I've had numerous conversations with a firm that's been retained to analyze our health insurance rates. Preliminary estimates are that the rates are going to be under that which we estimated in the budget. So again, preliminarily, you're going to get briefed on this next Monday as well. I have been told an expectation of a two hundred thousand dollar reduction in our premiums.
Anyone else?
Great. That's, that was one of the things. I just also wanted to mention about the joint tourism board. I know that you guys remember last week at the work session, I mentioned that, watching and viewing the, the board meetings, and how impressed I was with the people, the, the members of the board and their ideas. And I felt like they were exactly the people that need to be making decisions about promoting tourism in our community. I say community, the town and the county. And I know when Ms. Thompson requested Megan from the visitor center to come to the work session, I mentioned maybe having her speak with the joint tourism board. And that's when, I think that's when we discussed inviting them as part of it. I think once I mentioned that. So, and I'm definitely still interested in that. I, I shared with some citizens earlier tonight, my vision with the tourism board is having all the tourism stakeholders and having representatives from all the different areas. Mr. McCarthy, right? Mr. McCarthy, I was, so like, Mr. McCarthy, hotel representative, you know, somebody that owns a canoe company, a golf course, a restaurant, somebody from the historical site, all the different stakeholders that, you know, that are directly impacted from tourism, having them involved in that. I would still, you know, I'm not sure how the people that are on the joint tourism board are selected or appointed. I think we have something to do with that. But if, if we could look at that board and how it's made up, and I think that would be very important. So, and that's it.
Anyone else? I guess we're ready to vote. Mr. President, would you have a roll call this?
Thanks, Mayor Seelock.
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie's accent. Councilman Holloway.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Thompson.
Yes.
Motion to carry. Item number ten this evening, is an ordinance amendment to Chapter one seventy-five dash one oh six B point B point one B six pertaining to signed regulations for medical facilities within a medical center, Valley Health. Uh, Ms. President, would you read your subpoenas?
Valley Health submitted an application for an ordinance amendment to the town's signing regulations. The claim commission recommended approval of the attached proposed amendment. Council's requested to adopt on its second and final reading an ordinance amendment request submitted by Floyd Peter on behalf of Valley Health and Memorial Hospital pertaining to signed regulations for medical facilities within a medical center, such as a hospital. Upon approval, the amendment would change Town Code one seventy-five dash one oh six B one B six by defining what a medical center is and modify existing standards pertaining to just then.
Thank you, Ms. President. Uh, Mr. President, would you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to on the record that I will be saying from this vote to my employment account.
Okay, you have a motion on that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopt on its second and final reading an ordinance amendment to Town Code Chapter one seventy-five dash one oh six point B point one point B six by defining what a medical center is and modifying existing standards pertaining to just medical centers as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Now here is discussion. That discussion could have a roll call this.
Vice Mayor Seelock.
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie's accent. Councilman Holloway.
Yes.
Councilman Meza. Second. Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion to carry. Next item, item number eleven, ordinance amendment to Chapter nine dash three oh three provide for the abatement of lighted properties. Ms. President, would you please read that, please?
Using a successful model found in Loudoun County Code in use in Loudoun County and the town of Leesburg, a spot light abatement ordinance for the town is proposed. The ordinance provides for the abatement of lighted properties which threatens the public's health, safety, and or welfare. Council's requested to adopt on its second and final reading an ordinance amendment to Town Code Chapter nine dash three oh three, spot light abatement as presented.
You have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council adopt on its second and final reading an ordinance to amendment to Town Code Chapter nine dash three oh three, spot light abatement as presented.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gillespie spent a lot of work bringing this to the council and to our town lawyer, and it should be praised for that. After all the work we did on dilapidated buildings and whatever, this is a more common sense method to get at some of these issues that we have in town with some of these properties. So I will be voting yes on this matter.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Ms. President, you have a roll call this.
Vice Mayor Seelock.
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie's accent. Councilman Holloway.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Thompson. Yes.
Motion to carry. Item twelve, council approval, contract to CHA Consulting Inc. for INI abatement. Ms. President, would you read your subpoenas?
The current contract with CHA Consulting Inc. for INI engineering services expires this month. Council's requested to approve a new contract with CHA Consulting Inc. in the amount of four hundred and twenty-four thousand to allow the town and CHA to continue working on reducing the amount of INI treated at the wastewater treatment plant with completion of the following tasks. Task one, FR dash five sanitary sewer conveyance improvements for a hundred and forty-four thousand. Task two, annual INI and INI abatement engineering services for two hundred thousand. Task three, preliminary engineering report for eighty thousand for a total of four hundred and twenty-four thousand.
You have a motion.
Yes. I move that council approve a new contract with CHA Consulting in the amount of four hundred and twenty-four thousand to allow the town and CHA to continue working on reducing the amount of INI treated at the wastewater treatment plant with completion of the following tasks. Task one, FR five sanitary sewer conveyance improvements in the amount of a hundred and forty-four thousand. Task two, annual INI abatement engineering services in the amount of two hundred thousand. And task three, preliminary engineering report in the amount of eighty thousand. I further move that the interim town manager execute all documents specific to the contract.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Ms. President, could have a roll call this?
Vice Mayor Seelock.
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie's accent. Councilman Holloway.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Thompson. Yes.
Motion to carry. Next item, item thirteen, council appoint an MOA clerk of council and deputy clerk of council. Now here the, read your subpoenas, please.
Council's request to make appointments to the physician of clerk of council and deputy clerk of council, set positions to be in addition to the positions currently being held by staff.
You have a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move the council appoint Tina L. Presley as clerk of council and Marion L. Lemon as deputy clerk of council, set positions to be in addition to their current job duties as senior executive assistant to town manager and administrative assistant to the director of energy services respectfully. And contingent upon, administer of their oaths from the clerk of the circuit court that includes an approval copy of these minutes and executive memorandums of agreements, MOA, from each of the clerk of council and deputy clerk of council as presented.
Second.
And a motion is second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Ms. President, I have a roll call this.
Vice Mayor Seelock.
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie's accent. Councilman Holloway.
Yes.
Councilman Meza.
Yes.
Councilman Thompson. Yes.
Motion to carry. That's the end of our meeting tonight. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I want to bear your say up.
Aye.
Motion to carry. Thank everybody for coming out.